Pedro, you ready? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of Board of Selectments meeting of January 11th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Please stand for the plaid of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands in the nation, with regard to the visible and living in general for all the things of justice and law.
Okay, opening comments?
Well, I just, you know, I think, I want to commend the superintendent of Public Works and all his people for doing an outstanding job during this last storm. They did a great job. And as usual, we're very lucky to have the dedicated personnel of Public Works. They spent like 24 hours. And now, there's another storm coming this weekend, and they're going to be out again. I'd be remiss without special thanks to the police and fire as well.
Special sorrow for Peggy Davis passing away from the Board of Selectmen. My heart goes out to the Davis family. Number two, the fire department did an outstanding job in Little Nahat. I went by a couple of times, stayed away from it because they were covered with ice. But outstanding job, and the DPW plowing was fantastic during that storm, which was a lot more snow than I figured. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, they did. The DPW did a great job, and you're right, the fire department did a great job when they put that fire on. I actually went up there, because I'm a, I was a call guy, and I'm a little bit of a spark to myself, so I went up there and watched it, and it was really, it was very hot, I can tell you that, the fire. As soon as they put the water on it, it just turned to steam, but they knocked it down, and it's very, it's very, very tight up there, so I want to thank them for getting that, taking care of. And one other thing, I would encourage people to go to the Johnson School and purchase these handsome vests that say Johnson School on them. Nahat Johnson School.
Oh, nice. Mr. Chairman, the Nahat Fire did a great job, but we should send a thank you note to the chiefs of the surrounding communities that assisted us in that fire.
Absolutely. So, I move that.
I so move that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, move right. Very good. Okay. We have the minutes to approve of December 7th, December 13th, and release the executive session minutes of 9:14, and 9:27-17, and 10:24-17.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 12:07-17, 12:13-17, and release the executive session minutes of 9:14-17, 9:27-17, and 10:24-17.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ongoing business, Citizens Forum. Somebody here to speak. So, next on the agenda is approve the one-day liquor license for the NVA, the Nahat Veterans Association, 128-18, fundraiser, NOS, yes, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Town hall office hours, we're going to put that off until the next meeting.
Fair enough.
Let's talk about it then. And, there's another one that's written from here, and the Fort Ruckman DEP.
So, you've received a memo on that, as well as information from DEP that identifies that around 2010, we were in the process of trying to close up a 21E on two underground storage tanks that were located on Bailey's Hill Park area. Somehow, we dropped the ball. I'm not sure what happened, but we dropped the ball, and DEP just picked up the file and has identified that they want to work with us to close that out, but if we fail to work with them, they will fine us $32,000. And so, Dennis Ball and myself went down to the DEP offices, spoke with them, we came up with the understanding that we would remediate the remaining portion of the process immediately, then, and because of that, they were willing to reduce the fine to $1,000. So, we received a consultant bid on what it would cost to potentially remediate, and he thinks it'll be around $20,000, which, you know, that's no small change. However, what, I've been working with town council about the fact that we purchased this from the federal government. The federal government put in the tanks, and the federal government took out the tanks. Somehow, the process just didn't get finished. So, we've put the Army Corps of Engineer on notice that we're going to continue the process, finish it out, pay the cost for remediation, but then come back to them for reimbursement of all or a portion of it. In speaking with town council, the laws are not in our favor for us just swearing off and saying we have no part of this, that, you know, we bought the property, but we didn't buy the liability. So, we're kind of in a tough situation where we have to proceed, and if you look at the numbers, $32,000 fine or a $20,000, $25,000 cost, and we're still ahead of the game at that point. So, what I need is just your acknowledgement that we're going to proceed with this, and we will stay on the timeline that's outlined. It'll be about a year and a half going through the process.
Right.
Right. No, that's, I'm glad you weren't talking about it, because unfortunately, that's the way the Superfund laws are written, too, that they, they just take, you know, whoever, whoever owns it, owns it.
Correct.
And so, I mean, the only thing I think you can get, get them on is, they own it, they own it from cradle to grave, so they might be liable. Hopefully, it'll work out in our favor.
Well, I think also, if we can put a concerted effort, the four of us, to push some politics, you know, I think that they own kind of the, there's an obligation on their part to help us.
Yeah.
So, I think we can get a little bit of traction off of that. So, if you're comfortable with that, then I'll go ahead and sign the order, send it back, pay the $1,000, and then start the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I so move that.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have for you.
Okay. What town administrator report?
Oh, yeah. Yes, on the annual town meeting, you have before you the draft warrant, and I've thrown the kitchen sink in there. I mean, it's all in there. It's something we can talk about to pull some of the elements out. There's a lot of stuff in there that you're seeing for the first time. You'll see that there's also a list of your routine articles and then your potential new articles, and that kind of shows you what's been added new. So, we close the warrant at the next meeting. At that time, I'll walk you through all of these, because I'm hoping that I'll have all the information that we will have seen by then in here, and then we can start to exclude whatever we choose to exclude.
Now, the finance committee, when will we be meeting with them?
We, I'm trying to schedule a meeting for the following week after the 18th, so it would be the 22nd through the 26th, somewhere in there. And what I'll be doing is looking at the next aspect, the FY 2019 preliminary view of the budget. At the next January 18th meeting, I'll be presenting you with the draft budget, and we can walk through the details there, and then we'll meet the next week with the finance committee, and we'll go jointly through the specifics. What I do, what I'm going to do is present it to you first, talk with you in advance and get your thoughts on some of the, the elements. We do have some unusual things happening this year that'll draw your attention, and, you know, some of it's very good, some of it's unfortunate. I mean, the water sewer issue, the borrowing and debt on that is the unfortunate part of it. So, I'll give you an overview memo on the budget, so it gives you a, a quick learner's guide, and then I'll give you a call, and we can chat about it, and then we'll talk about the 18th, and we'll go to the next week. In there also, on the 18th, what I'd like to do is have you look at the votes on the fees, classification, and capital. So, if you could take a look at those, they're all included in your binder.
You're right.
Yeah, they're also in your last binder as well. There are minor modifications to the classification, just to pick up some stragglers that expand outside of the gap area. And then, there are some fee changes that are recommended by the departments that are impacted, and then the capital plan is pretty comprehensive. You'll see a lot of water and sewer in there. So, if you could take a look at that, let me know of any questions between now and the 18th, and then we can talk about it on the 18th.
Just a quick question from me, if I may?
Sure.
The articles 31 and 2 on fire.
Yes.
Fire capital temporary structure and the fire capital station design.
Yep.
We still have to cover that.
Correct.
I mean, I know you threw everything in here.
Exactly.
It was nice to see.
At the next meeting, you'll also be hearing from the committee again.
Yes.
So, they'll go first, and then we'll launch into this as a discussion. At that point, then, you can give me policy direction as to what you want to do with those two articles.
Okay.
And any other additional articles that go in with the fire station.
Have they looked at this, Rick, Jakulis, I think his name is, he works for Seth Maltin, sent me an email about grants, fire station grants?
I know the chief has been working with the various grant vendors, if you will, and Mary Ellen, to try to figure out what we are available for, but let me check to see if Seth Maltin-
I've sent it. I think it's, I think we have a good shot at getting some kind of grant for that, so...
Fire grants, for buildings?
That's what it said. That's what, I briefly read it.
Sweet.
You know, new construction and, you know, revamping.
Okay. Excellent.
Could you forward that to us?
Huh?
Could I get it forwarded?
Sure. I thought, I think he's, maybe he'll see, I-
No, I'm-
I will send it to you, absolutely.
Please, I could have missed it, too.
It's Rick Jakias that did it? That sent it? Rick Jakias sent it?
Yes, he's in? Yeah.
Yeah.
I met him, he put me on his email.
Yeah, and I know Rick well, so I will reach out to him and just maybe get more information.
Okay.
And that's all I have for administrator report.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may?
Sure.
I would like, I make the motion that every meeting from now until it's finished, that we get an update on the town wharf.
Yeah, actually, there is an update. I have it here. Can we, I mean, are they going to be able to get this complete?
Oh, yes, yes. As you-
They're watering the hole, correct?
Yeah, exactly. They ran into a problem with the pilings for de-watering.
Right.
But as you saw, with the quick action that was occurring, you know, they had the cold and then the storm, and so that slowed them down, but they're back on track, and so it'll just keep going quickly.
Are they, let me ask you this, are they-
Do you want Dennis to be at the next meeting? He'd be here for the fire station anyway.
When they did the test, test boards, didn't they find the legs then?
Well, they found that they could drive the pilings down to 10 feet, but for some reason, the Unified is finding resistance at 8 feet. And Childs has said that 8 feet is appropriate, and this is just for de-watering. This isn't for any permanent component of the structure, so-
Right, I know. You're going to pull that stuff out, I know.
Exactly. Exactly. So, Unified said not a problem at all.
Okay. As long as they're on track and they get it done.
Okay, but I still have a motion.
Yes, okay. Second, please. For an update on the wharf, every, every meeting we have from now until-
I'm going to second the motion for discussion.
Okay, I'll second, that's all.
Discussion?
I think, there's so many questions about the wharf from being asked, you know, by many people, many calls. I think you should have, invite the public to a hearing on the update.
Sure.
Next meeting, start, you know, invite the contractor, invite the superintendent of Public Works. And if there's someone responsible from the contractor that could come to the meeting and give us, you know, continued updates, like-
Yeah.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Because I think there's so many people asking questions because, you know, of their schedule. They work, they don't work, they're not down there. I mean, it's like, it's low tide, 60-degree weather, how come they're not there? You know, I'm getting-
No, I know, I get the same.
And I think we need to just ensure them that the contract's going to be completed, it's going to be completed on time, and give a timetable of when it is going to be completed, so that the, the people using the slip will be ready for the, you know, especially the lobster. They don't have to use the lumber. Would you set that up?
Sure.
I just amend his motion that he legally just set up a couple of weeks-
Second the amendment.
So, we'll just make it a nice big public meeting, you know, let everybody know that we're going to talk about it.
After a public meeting, an update could go through the town administrator.
Yeah.
But the town out there has been asking and asking and asking.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think they're afraid because of what happened last winter, so we just have to make sure that it happens, that's all.
Yeah, and, you know, I hope you saw what we saw, which is that when they started going, it was just hauling, so they were really ripping through it. So, once it gets going, it'll be impressive. But no, I'll, I'll work with you and set that up.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do we got Castor?
Yes, we do. So, that's next. So, we're done with the, the administrative report? Anybody else? T, Richie?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Old business? I see none. New business? Okay, we have a public hearing for the Nahat Market Liquor License. We have attorney Sam Vitale and Lack Boy here.
Sam? I'm attorney Vitale.
If we could start-
And Lack Boy's here.
Sam, if we could start with the reading of the notice?
Excuse me?
We just need to start with the meeting, reading of the notice. Yeah.
I'll read the notice, okay. Notice is hereby given that the, an application for the, a new annual package store wine and malt liquor license has been applied for by the Nahat Market Incorporated for the property located at 271 Castle Road, Nahat, Mass. Under the alcoholic beverage control law, any protests, if any there be, against the issues of a license shall be heard at the hour of 7:40 PM, or as time allows, on the fourth day of January 2018, during regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting at the Nahat Town Hall, Main Hall, 334 Nahat Road, Nahat, Mass. It has been amended to the 11th-
Okay.
-because of the, the meeting that we missed last, last week.
Okay, I was going to ask that.
So, okay. It has been read. I'm attorney Vitale. With me is Lack Boy. He's the principal of the Nahat Market, Inc. He's the proposed manager. He's TIP certified, having well over 10 years' experience in a convenience store that had a beer and wine license in the city of Salem. He's been operating at the store at 271 Castle Road, and believes, in response to the customers who come in and asked him about the ability to sell beer and wine, that he could be serving the public need in that section of the town. But in order to do so, one needs to get a license. The license he needs to get is known as a wine and malt beverages license. It's within the quota that the town has, and I think, given in response to the folks who come into the store, who are the customers, and it's a neighborhood variety store, that the public need and good would be served, should the board decide to grant the license. As you know, it's a good practice to be what's called TIP certified. That's training and how to recognize people who have either been drinking before they come to the store, understanding how to card people with respect to the legal age to buy alcohol, beer, and wine, and nothing beats experience, and he's had that experience. As he pointed out to me, in the 10 years that he was operating in that capacity in Salem, the store never had a violation of any kind. And so, I think he's well-suited to be the manager. I think the location lends itself, as I say, in response to the folks that are there. I know the town, I think, has one other beer and wine seaside variety. And in terms of his hours of operation, I think, he wouldn't, not sell beer or wine or any products after the hours of 8:00 PM.
At the work time, the time?
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM. And both, because if, if you ever worked in a convenience store, and it's a family operation, he and his wife, you're spending lots of hours there as it is, and in reality, I think the demand, and then in terms of the interest of the, both the town and the operator, it would be well-served to keep the hours from closing at 8 o'clock. I'd be glad to have him answer any questions you may have.
So, and that everybody was notified properly?
Yes. I have copies of the receipts from the certified mail.
Anybody object, any objections?
I know that he spoke at the school, I think, and they did not express any objection.
Yeah, the school, they are very happy to support, yeah.
Is there a neighbor, Brian? Anybody, T?
Is this the one by across from the school?
Yeah. He went through the proper procedure, you know, he sent the affidavit to the school, I believe. You have all that information.
Can I have, you like the copy?
Well, the town should have that on, on file. Okay, so he's got it all.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the new annual package store wine and malt license for the Nahat Market, 271 Castle Road, Nahat, as so presented. Applied by Mr. Lack Quang under the alcoholic beverage commission law. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
You can second it?
No.
We don't have a second?
I don't second it.
For discussion?
You can second it.
Okay, I'll second it for discussion. I, I thought that we were gonna, I thought that this was gonna, there was going to be a, a retraction.
Excuse me?
I was under the assumption that we were going to retract it.
I can't.
You wanted to discuss it in detail.
He was gonna, he wanted me to take it, take it off the, off the agenda. No?
Because, well, I think I spoke with you about the fact that the meeting got postponed. I saw that the, the notice was republished, the item, the property, so I was concerned that, as you had indicated, that we can make sure that we follow all of the procedures. I didn't know what happened when the meeting got postponed.
Right.
But then since then, I saw the, since I, I think on the floor, that the meeting, or whenever the meeting got postponed, saying this was meaningfully continued.
Okay.
So, that was what I was concerned about.
Well- T, go ahead.
The people who own the building and lease the store called me to say they objected to it.
Well, are they here?
It doesn't matter, they called me.
Well, let me just show you-
They will write a letter, if necessary.
From the, when the previous owner sold the property, that the lease was assigned. I mean, here's a copy to the records.
That I know. From Allen.
Yeah.
These are the new owners.
It's in full force and effect.
These are the new owners who said to me that they objected to this.
That, that may be. The A, they're not here. B, according to their attorney, and according to that, the lease is in effect right now.
Okay.
And it's in effect till the end of that term, in such a condition. But I didn't write that letter. The attorney for the owner did, and you could read it into the record, and it says, the lease is in effect, and it's been assigned, and you are to pay the rent to the new owners. So, I don't represent the people who own the building. Mr. Smith did, and that's what he did. If you look at the lease, it says it's binding on Robert Allen, his successor, is and signs. And according to the letter from the attorney for Mr. Allen, the lease was assigned.
That's a lease, this is a license.
I understand.
Well, I understand, too.
But you're interested in being business, and you lease, and he has a lease. It's in effect. That's what the letter says. The lease is in effect.
They called me to say they were against it.
That may be.
They own the place. If they say they were against it, they're against it.
Again.
So, I-
They may be against it, but the fact of the matter is that the letter, when the property was sold, said that the lease was assigned to them, and Mr. By was to pay the rent. I mean, he, he's done everything he's supposed to. So, I'm saying to you, it is a lease, it's in effect, and it's been assigned. I don't represent them. The gentleman who did instructed the tenant to pay the rent to the new owners, that the lease, I mean, he says that the lease is in effect, and he says it's been assigned.
And I'm voting no on the license.
I understand, but I, I didn't-
They called me, they're a constituent of the town. They just bought the house.
And they have a lawyer apparent.
And they're against it. So, I'm voting no.
Right. Well, I'm just, in answer to your question-
I didn't ask a question. My question is, they own the place, they said no to me, that they are against it.
They, they're not here.
I don't care if they're here or not. They called me, they called me at 6:30 to say it was withdrawn.
No.
Okay, can you, can you answer that, Lock? You just said you were going to withdraw it. I, I had every intention of taking it off the agenda, because I was told that it was, he told me that he wanted to take it off the agenda.
Didn't tell me that. I think the only question we had about the, the notice, whether it was properly noticed because we raised it, and I satisfied myself, and I thought that the lease, that the notice was republished, was paid.
Okay, I, I just don't like to be played. I just want to make sure that, you know-
You and I spoke about notices.
Yes, I wanted to make sure, I wanted, I wanted the letter, though.
I said, I would check with you to determine whether the, about the-
That's right.
The notice has been filed.
And, and you're fortunate we had Mary, Mary, Mary took care of it. She took care of something that you should have taken care of.
Well, that, she represented to us.
Right.
And I, then, sure, I then checked on my own, and I can't go through the school.
Oh, I know, and, and I talked to them, they're, they're okay with it, but-
Yes.
There is one problem, we have a physician with this saying, and my problem is, Lock, you told me that you, you wanted, are you saying you don't want to withdraw? You have to be truthful, you're going to tell me, because you can't-
I, I didn't tell anybody, oh, I just wanted to make some clear of that, because I didn't know that. The only issue you and I were discussing was the problem.
So, why, tell me what you want.
I'm very shocked when I heard the landlord tell me that they not support me, but my attorney just did send the paper to their attorney for a week and talk with them, and we asked them, we support us, we will satisfy their requirement, like, we will increase the rent, and we will comply on all they want, but they still doesn't want to have a five-year option after the, the lease signed. That's make me so nervous. If I invest the money to, to build a cooler, to pay their rent more every month, and we have to spend more money, could cost us around like 10 to 15 grand, but they just allow us to stay there one or two more years, that is a really bad investment for us. That's the reason, is make us panic, and make my wife so panicked, and that's why I feel like, you know, I don't want to pursue the license, that's the reason.
Mr. Chairman, so you don't want to pursue it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'd like to, in order to give them an opportunity, I'd like to postpone our decision and to carry it over to our next meeting, so that we can get this, this squared away, you know, vote.
Sure. Your decision is whether to grant the license. But here's the reality, okay? If the license doesn't get approved, he has the doubt of this.
No, 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 attorney, listen, attorney, you know, I understand all that. I'm just saying, you know, I don't want to vote it down tonight, okay? Based on the owner or whatever. He's not here, there's no letter in the file here from him, okay? But I want to get it, I want, in my mind, I was against it because you were within 500 feet of a school, but I found out that to be in-
That's their thing.
That was fine, that was fine, and I was fine with it. But if the owner of the building says no, and he's saying, he called one of the selectmen, I have to have used good judgment and said, the selectmen, I trust them, and give you an opportunity to meet with your owners and to come up with a, a plan, and we'll put it on the agenda. There's no need that we rush into this issue in the license.
To wait for the storm, and-
That's what I'm saying, so we can give you two more weeks to get it, and have them either come up for it or against us, and meet with us, or a letter.
It's next week.
Okay, which, whatever meeting that's.
It's next week, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's next week.
All right.
And, and he just, he just indicated that he doesn't wanna pursue it, because if he's, if he only has another year, year and a half on his lease, it's not worth him to put these big pools in there and put beer and wine in there, because.
Well, that may change people to view of the world, because then they have him as a tenant under the current lease, or, or along the list.
It's another year and a half.
No, the, the, the current lease has options of.
Five year, after two twenty, yeah.
So, so you see, license are hard choices, so. The license doesn't get approved, that doesn't mean the lease isn't valid, the lease is valid, and it goes on, not only for two years, it goes on to five more, and then five more, under the current term.
Mr. Chairman, I move we put this on hold until.
Yeah, okay, we'll table it till next, uh, next week.
I, I, I could, I, I'll make available the administrative copy of the lease and the letter he brought from.
I, I think I just gave it to, did I give it to you yet? We'll, we'll, um.
We'll talk tomorrow, Sam.
No, he took it.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to have the owner here.
Yeah.
President.
If they, if they want.
Our, our. The owner called me at six thirty tonight and said, I won't come up because it's not gonna be brought up.
Right.
That's what the owner told me, they have a notice ready, and they're ready with a letter.
I'm just, I'm just going, I'm just going by my book, which was in my book.
Why does owners know?
No, and it said, Richie, read this.
Right, I know, I know.
So I'm just going by what my copy says here. Now, someone should've pulled this page, and.
Right.
It's in violation of my rights.
I was gonna call you, Jeff, and tell you to pull, pull the, uh, put it off, take it off the agenda, because I was told to take it off the agenda.
Okay.
You gotta be, you gotta be specific.
Let's be honest, I, I wanna give the, let's give, uh, let's give, give you a break, and, and see if we can straighten this thing out, all right? I know, I know, uh, Sam will give you a break on the legal field, okay, carry over, because he's.
Well, I like visiting here.
He's a good guy, and we, we like him here, and, uh, and I hope he gives you, you know, this, this should be a freebie tonight, you know, but next maybe be a, you know.
I appreciate your kind words, thank you. And, and thanks for your help.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lack.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Okay. Uh, okay. Next on the agenda, approved used car, uh, dealer licenses, um, I will, uh, abstain from that one, since I own one of those. Present five B.
Oh, that's the one after.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the used car dealer licenses, class two for county of two thousand eighteen, for Judge Mysterious, D A B Seaside Auto, Francis Burrell, and G B A Nahat Garage. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Is that you, Francis Burrell?
That's me.
Wow.
Any discussion?
None.
Okay, uh.
No.
Would you call the question?
Of course I'll call the question.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay. Okay, now, we have the used.
Now it's ready.
Oh, yeah. Two thousand, yeah, the eighteen, uh, lost trap.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the attached trap storage license upon submitted by the lease agreement and payment of fees. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so we have one more item?
Oh, there's one more item, this one.
Oh, okay, yes. So, I got an email today from, uh, Ellen Goldberg, she's on the, uh, Green Community Committee, the meeting, uh, I had asked the committee if anybody would like to be on the C P C, and she came back to me today and said she'd love to be on it, and she's very, very qualified, smart woman, she's been in the house for several years. So, uh, I would love to, uh, appoint her, um.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have, you have two open positions, so you've just filled one, we have one more, and then we have a recreation appointment, so.
I have, I have someone for the, uh.
Recreation?
Not for the recreation, for the, the C P C, and the, um, he's an attorney, and he moved to town about a year ago. Uh, and I was just talking to him, and he would love to get on that committee.
All right, good.
But.
Ellen Goldberg?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ellen.
I hope she's watching. I'll call her, I don't know. But it's great, because it's very hard to find volunteers.
It is.
Everybody knows.
Yeah, I, you know, he just, uh, he was, he just moved to town, and he's, uh, he's, he's quite politically astute, he was left at the State House, and he's had him with a lot of the, um, local politicians.
Do you know anybody who would like to be on the recreation committee and then go on to the C P C? Um, because we have one open position on both.
Both. I work on the recreation, I think there's somebody, I, I forget, you know, but I gotta ask, I gotta make sure. This one, uh, you know, he asked me to, if we could, and I thought he'd be perfect for that committee, because he's a lawyer and he's, uh, perfect. He was a lobbyist at the State House, so.
Okay, um. There's one about the town hall office hours, and I do wanna bring it up next, at the next meeting. If that's okay.
That's okay, of course it is.
All right.
I really would like in the, the town, Nahat WAF update.
Yes.
WAF update, because instead of all these questions to us as we roam the town.
Right, no, no, no.
This way they can come up, and if they don't watch, they don't watch, that's, but at least we've put it to them.
Two questions have been, I've been asked a lot lately, as of course, is the town WAF in northeastern. I think we need to meet with the northeastern people and have a public hearing, uh, with northeast, eastern, to give an upgrade, update on what their plans are, proposals, so that the public knows exactly what's gonna transpire up there at the, uh, northeastern site.
Richie, let me talk to you after the meeting on that one, because there's, there is some discussion going on about that, so.
No, I, yeah, I, I, yeah, I just, Enzo, I guess, Enzo's got more information.
Uh, yeah, I think that, um, we need to have a public meeting, I've, I've expressed that, and, well, we'll have a, we'll have a, uh, when they're ready. I think that they're, um, I still think they're up in the air, from what I, I understand, they're, they're up in the air, I think they're.
You know, just as we, as we.
But I have been assured.
Tell the public that, what, what we know, and if it's, you know, they're planned, they're not planned, and sort of thing. There's too many rumors going around, back and forth, they're, they're putting a hotel up there, I mean, I don't know, you know, I mean.
I'm gonna kill one rumor, and that one rumor is, it was absolutely, the president of the university said there would absolutely be no undergraduate dorms there.
Yes.
Or graduate dorms, at all, there's not gonna be any dormitories up there.
Again, not to be the old dark horse here, but I'd like them to come, come up and tell us, instead of telling one of us, and then another one, and then, they've, I've got a phone call in from them too, but I'd rather have them come up for the public to see.
Well, you know, I just.
And hear, good idea, we should have a public meeting, as part of one of our meetings.
We just have it up front, and we have nothing to hide.
Right.
And I think we need to meet with the FinCom soon, so, for the, uh, the budget that's breathing down our throat.
Well, he's got the budget, he, you know, he's throwing the budget together, we just need to go through it, and then we've gotta get, give, uh, you know, final, as we go through with him, uh, the town administrator, uh, as we progress, what, what direction we're gonna give him on the budget, so that we can finalize. All the articles are not due until the end of this month, okay?
Yep.
The budgets, we can, we can submit, give him initial budget, like he's got there tonight.
Right.
And get him started on that, and, I mean, the budget's the budget, you know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna cut the public works out, of the police or fire, so those three budgets are usually, uh, stable, okay, and then anything else. The biggest thing that we've got going, and we've gotta figure out exactly, and what we're gonna hold back, is the water and sewer.
Borrowing, too.
No, no, I understand, but, I mean, there's a lot of talk about, okay, um, if we're gonna go out and borrow, you know, we, and we need to get these water and sewer mains corrected, and get, get an end star. If people wanna, maybe discontinue the three percent surcharge on the, uh, on the other.
C P C.
Yeah, C P C. These people, I mean, uh, I mean, the, these things, maybe we can discontinue that, just for, you know, again, just, because all of our money might be just dedicated to the, the, the water and sewer mains.
Right.
It's gonna be millions of dollars, things like that, so I, I just, all right. We need a, we need a, we need a review that, look at everything, and then make some decisions, say which direction, so, and then meet with the finance committee and give them our direction and with the town administrator. I mean, he's got the initial budget, this is like, this is what, January?
Do you wanna give them the, uh, preliminary budget, so they can at least get started?
I'll send it out, um, probably tomorrow late.
All right.
And I'll send it out to all of you, yeah, yeah.
I mean, but, I mean, they can get started, but I mean, this is, again, the middle of January, we don't.
Oh, I know that.
We usually don't get everything done, I mean, until.
Well, they usually start working on it in January, they, they should've had a meeting by now.
Well, I understand, but, I mean, the budget, last year's budget and this year's budget from, you know, the, the, uh, police or fire, we've gotta, we've gotta look at that, okay? We gotta give them direction, as well as the finance committee, say, what are the selectmen gonna do? Are they gonna approve this budget, okay? Are we gonna add the articles? We're gonna go for, in favor of these articles, you know what I mean, so we don't.
Right, exactly.
And then we gotta straighten out the, this treasurer collector, I thought that, I saw the money in there for that project, I mean.
I have, uh, I have the, the, um.
The letter, we should get that, correct it right away, at least, get that squared away.
Well, I got the, I got the proposal from, from, uh, the.
Jefferson?
Yeah?
Jefferson, C P A.
Yeah, then I, and how many hours do we have coming to us from Zobrio?
Zobrio, we have, I think it's eight hours total, I believe.
Well, that's, that's, that's a good chunk of time, I mean.
Yeah, the, the issue's complex, that's why, um, you, Kathy and I should talk about it, because it's, it's, this really resolves one aspect of the.
But we need, we need to move on to, to a different phase, and that, that we need.
Yeah, but we need to move on right away, because the, uh, Debbie Waters can't, 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 can't move.
Well, exactly.
We need to get that, we need to get those done before, what do you wanna approve?
We can approve the, uh, that, that, that company.
It's Jefferson, C P A, but, um, I think what you have to do is understand the bigger context, because if you take the pieces and approve them, you'll end up at some point having an, an overall but bill that will hit, and right now, that, we're ten thousand into it, so that would be another twenty-five hundred, and then that's only a piece of it, so looking at the other pieces, that could get you quickly into this.
We have money, we have to go to reserve fund with us?
Yeah, eventually.
All right, so there's only, there's only, there's only two, two, that's one part of it.
Yep, reconciliations.
Reconciliation, and then the other part of it would be training with, um, the computer system.
But we also have aspects such as tax title, um, there are other processes that, um, we haven't started yet, and so that's part of what Deb is having trouble with. She can't really roll the final budget numbers until she has that information.
No, 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 it's a tax title, it's.
The, the, it's a constant, uh, it dri- it drives and drabs as a constant each year. What we experienced this last round was we just had.
But the FinCom, they're gonna need all these numbers.
Oh, I know.
And we should put a deadline on this whole thing, so that.
I make a motion that we go with the C P A and with Zobrio training to stop, period.
We have eight hours coming to us from Zobrio.
Zobrio, and she's gonna be twenty-five hundred dollars for the C P A.
Twenty-five hundred dollars for Jefferson.
I'll second it.
I so move that.
Right. Okay. It's twenty-five hundred dollars, it'll get her started, and then, we have eight hours with Zobrio, she can call them in, it's, it's free, you know, we, it's part of that software package that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, we should be using it.
Okay, and this is gonna get started, but I don't wanna leave here an alert and just approve twenty-five hundred, I mean.
No, 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 I think we can, we can.
There's training in there for how much, forty thousand or thirty something?
Twenty thousand.
How much else?
There, there's a, an additional consideration of twenty thousand.
Why don't we approve the whole twenty thousand, because we can approve the, you know, the twenty-five hundred, have a second motion for the twenty thousand, so that, based on the approval of the FinCom on the reserve, uh, transfer, so that it's in the works.
I'm not sure we, I, I think we should just start with that, I'm not sure if we even have, what do we have in the reserve fund?
Uh, we have, uh, about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-six.
We've got plenty of money in the, the fund, or we might need it for the.
Why don't we just take little, 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 I think, little steps with this, let's just try a little step.
Yeah, but.
I mean, I don't understand what the twenty, the twenty thousand's for.
My, my question is this, yeah, we need to get this done, so Debbie Waters can get her accounts reconciled.